Lex.
Here.
Anderson. Burksen.
Here.
Carter. Covert. Esri.
Here.
Petrie.
Present.
I will mention that Max Mitchell let me know that he was going to be traveling today and would not be able to attend. But I have not, I did not hear from anyone else. Do we know other folks are missing for a reason?
Yes, Mr. Anderson's on the eighth grade trip with his son to DC.
No, that, I would not pass that up if I, if I were him, so. Okay, we need, first, we need an approval of the agenda. Would someone move the agenda, please?
Someone move.
Mr. Rosales, second by Ms. Michaels. Any discussion about the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Next, I, we need a notice of the meeting.
Notice is hereby given that a study session of the County Board, Champaign County, Illinois, will convene on March 24th, 2015, at 6:00 PM in the Lyle Shields Meeting Room, Perkins Administrative Center, 1776 East Washington Street, Urbana, Illinois, for the purpose of County Board Strategic Planning.
Thank you. All right, so our meeting tonight is a study session to work on our strategic plan. We have brought in a professional facilitator, Jan Eisen, who's over there. I'll, I'll give you a little bit of a lead in. Those who have been paying attention know that last, end of last summer and beginning of last fall, we did some work on the strategic plan to take a, take a look at it and do a refresh because it had not been refreshed, I believe, since 2012. The, the, there's been some, we didn't get done with the review of the strategic plan at that time. We worked through some updates of the mission, vision, and values, and we didn't get to the point where we actually talked about initiatives, which was probably convenient because the election then occurred and we had some changeover with some board members. So, the next phase of what we're trying to work with, with updating the strategic plan is looking at what we want to accomplish as a board ostensibly in our board term because we're all involved here for the next two years as a part of this board. We can think, we can really think in those terms. If you read through the, what I called the homework for the, for the board meeting, you can see that ideas that are smaller than two years and longer than two years are also, also welcome in this discussion because if you think about how we do things as a county board, essentially for planning, our, our smallest blueprint is our annual budget. So, this is a good time to be talking about things that we would like to do in the next year because budget planning will be starting very soon now, if not already, the bits and pieces coming together. But we also need to think in terms of what we want, since we're all going to be on this board for the next two years, what we want to accomplish before the, the next, the next board gets seated in December of, of 2016. And so, that's another thing to look at. And of course, we know a lot of our, I'll call them problems or challenges or opportunities, whatever, however you want to think about them, are things that can't be done in two years' time. Some of them are going to take five, maybe 10 years to get around to getting to the end of them. So, we can, we can, as this board, take off, you know, a year's chunk with a budget. We can take a two-year chunk with maybe a strategic plan for this board, and then we can set the stage by looking at the longer-term things, and hopefully, some of us will be on the next board. There's no question about that. They can keep taking that further. But those are the, those are the scopes that run through my mind when I think about strategic planning for an organization like this. I'll also share that, that this most, the strategic plan that we've used as our base came out of 2012, which was probably a little bit early for what I would consider to be an ideal situation. I, I think when we do redistricting, which will happen in 2020 for the 2022 board elections, where, you know, parts of the county may move map-wise and the lay, the makeup of the board may change more, more drastically than it does year to year, or election to election. That's the next time I think that a county board should maybe start from scratch in a strategic planning exercise because that's when things are most likely to change from an overview. But in our, in our scope of the next two years and, you know, next four to six years, I think we can take the base that we had and we can look at the, the items that we feel like we should be focusing on to try to accomplish and get them, get them down. When, when we're done with our, our work tonight, we'll see how far we get. In my mind, a good night would be all of these yellow papers filled with things so that we can then come back and take a, take a stab at prioritizing them because that would be an important step. Maybe if we get a little bit further along, we could, we could talk about that tonight. We'll, we'll see how that goes. So, in order to, to do this the best way possible, we invited Jan to join us tonight to be a facilitator because if, if any one of us tries to facilitate this, we already have kind of things in our minds as to what we want to do. Jan is an impartial person. I'll, I'll tell you, I worked with Jan when she was Director of the Lincoln Trail Library System, and I served on their board, and I think we went through a Lincoln Trail Strategic Planning effort, and then we went through an IT Strategic Planning effort for Lincoln Trail. And then after that experience, she came and helped the Orpheum Children's Science Museum through a strategic planning exercise as, again, as a third-party impartial person that was brought in. So, that's why we, that's why we invited Jan. I had that connection and already worked with her in the past. And at this point, I think I'd like to hand it over to you, Jan.
Thank you. So, is this on now? No? Good, good evening.
Jan, do you want us to go around the table and introduce ourselves and, or were you, do you have that already worked into your?
I do not have that worked in. And frankly, I think it, based on the mini-process map, it might be a little, take a little too long.
Okay.
But I do want to first ask you, if I call on you, can I use, may I use your first names? I don't, I don't want to, I mean, I don't know any of you except for James, and now Patsy, but I, I don't want to offend anybody by using first names. So, thank you for inviting me. I do live in the county. I live in Lincolnshire Fields. I am a retired librarian, but somebody asked me how I got into facilitating and strategic planning. Well, Lincoln Trail is, was an organization, and they still have an organization like that, only it's called something else, that worked with lots of different libraries. And so, I learned early on in my job, my job didn't, wasn't really how to put a book on a shelf. My job was how to get people to work together. And so, I took numerous training sessions in facilitation, and I find that frankly, I liked it just as much, if not more, than, than putting a book on the shelf. I love getting, having people have their materials, but I really liked getting people to work together. So, that's, that's really what my background is. So, tonight, the first, we have a kind of three parts that is in the, the agenda, and I'm not sure of what the rules of the, are, if I have to go exactly by the three, the way they're ordered, or can I mush them?
No, it's a, it's a study session.
Okay.
I think you can mush them a little bit.
Okay. So, so, we are going to talk about rules of engagement. We're going to talk about the statement purpose and, of the study session, and then we're going to talk about the strategic plan, goals, and initiatives, and in kind of a brainstorming mode. And I, I want you to know that I'm not going to call it brainstorming as much as listing. Brainstorming is a little more wide open, a little more, maybe even a little more creative. And I don't want you not to be creative, don't get me wrong, but I don't, I think what we're trying to do is list, list some really good ideas, and so, it could be somewhat brainstorming, but a little more deliberate in some ways than, than a full-fledged brainstorming session. So, let's start off with the rules of engagement. These are some that I proposed and the committee looked at, and we can certainly add more. I would ask you to do one speaker at a time. Know that every idea is valid. So, we're not here, this is not a decision-making process tonight. So, if you like one thing and you like another thing, that's wonderful. That's, but both of those items need to be on the table because your idea is just as valid as the next person's idea. So, everybody's idea is valid. I'd ask that all of you participate. I tend to be a pretty, I'm not real laid-back as a facilitator, but I do pay a lot of attention to who's talked, and so, I'm able, able to, I'm likely to contact you or call on you. If you're not comfortable with that, say, "Not now," or something, wave me off. Not trying to embarrass you, I'm just trying to make sure that your ideas are heard. I also have, for those people that might not necessarily want to say all their ideas, I have some sticky notes that you can write some on, and we can add those up also. So, again, we're really concerned about ideas. I'd like you to listen actively to others. I'm, I have to admit, I'm not necessarily a great listener, but what I, and most often we listen on how we're going to respond as opposed to listen to hear what somebody says. So, I'd, I'd like to encourage you to really be active listeners tonight. If you can turn your cell phones to vibrate and text, I'd appreciate it. We'd all appreciate it. Please refrain from side conversations. Be respectful, no interruption, and please, let's laugh and have a little bit of fun. I know it's a study session, and I know you guys, you all do really serious, good work, but if we laugh and we smile and we have a little fun, I think you'll get a lot just as good of ideas and you'll, you'll be happier. Any other, are these okay with everybody? So, I'm going to ask, so that's another thing I'm going to do is, so when you give me an idea or something and I have, and somebody writes something down, I'm going to say, "Is this what you said?" I'm going to make sure that I get what you said because I'm not going to, I'm, I'm going to make sure we understand it. So, are these okay? Is this okay with everybody? Is there anything else you'd like to add? No what? Okay, I can do that. See, when I tell you we're adding everything. Any others? Okay, another, another thing that I tend to do to remind people is that you've agreed to this. Okay? So, these are our rules of engagement. Next part of is the statement of purpose and outcome, and James did a great job of, of telling you exactly what, you know. I love sticky notes. So, the purpose of the meeting is to update, and so, you've heard from James, you've gotten the update, and seek input regarding this Champaign Strategic Plan. Pretty simple, what you already heard, just a quick revision, reminder. So, our outcomes, so our outcomes tonight are very specific, and I hope that by the end of the night, I'll be able to come back and check every one of these off. And we have, you've had an update on the current strategic plan, and you had that from James. We're going to have a list of items for the county board initiatives. Now, James said we might not get to prioritize. I hope we're going to have a list of items ID'd as a priority. Now, they're not going to be, so, if we prioritize, they're going to be through a multi-voting way of doing things, sticky dots, nothing that, it doesn't, if something doesn't get a dot on it, doesn't mean it's going anywhere. All of this is going to the planning committee to look at. Everything is going to them. It is, nothing is going to be lost after tonight. You're going to have an option to add in, revise, and delete from the goals. So, back here on this wall, and I'm going to, I'm going to tell you about these. So, we have Goal One, Goal Two, Goal Three, Goal Four, and other suggestions for goals. So, here's the Goal One, "Champaign County is a high-performing local government organization committed to open, transparent governance." So, are, if, if some of you or any of you feel like there's something that needs to be added to that goal, deleted from that goal, say, "I just don't understand this goal very well." I mean, any kind of comment, at a break time, you're going to have an opportunity to go back there and put a sticky note on it. And then there's suggestions for other goals. So, Champaign County, somebody suggested that Champaign County has valued natural resources and as a commitment to balancing, balancing economic development and protecting the environment doesn't appear to be in the plan. That's just somebody's suggestion, somebody's idea. So, if you have a goal or an idea that you think needs to be considered, be sure you put it up there. Okay? And you're going to have to, and lastly, suggestions for revision or adding to the mission, vision, and values. The mission, vision, and values are stated back here. Again, at the break time, we're going to let you have these post-it notes or even write directly on, just use these markers, they're water soluble, and add anything you have. If there's a word that you'd like to cease, so sometimes in a mission statement, for me, it is, you know, there's a word that I really want in that mission statement that doesn't seem to be there, or there's a word that I don't understand in the mission statement, just put it up there. And again, the committee can decide that. Now, I do know that you all have re, just adopted that mission statement recently. So, it may be that you're, you're all, it, so, we, we put it up there for your consideration. The real meat of this meeting are the county board initiatives. Are these, this seem doable here? Okay. So, what I have here is a mini-process guide. I did not use the word agenda because the agenda is out, but in order to get to where we want to be, we did the introductions. I'm going to talk, so introduction, I haven't talked about roles. We talked about the purpose and outcome, and then, then for 40 minutes, we're going to list initiatives for all the goals. And what we're going to do is, the goals are here under these, and there's, so here's Champaign Goal One. And if James has an idea, we're not going to go goal by goal, we're going to make it wide open for all goals at the time. You'll say, "I would like an ad, suggested initiative for Goal One," and tell me which one it is. If you don't know what goal it goes to, you don't have any idea, we've got an other column, and we'll just put it up there. If John thinks what James suggested really should be in Goal Two, we're going to do and put it both places. So, I'm going to write, "Okay, James suggested X," and John says, "Well, gee, I'd like to see that under Goal Two also." I'm going to, we're going to write it both places. Again, this is going to be broad, we want to make it broad and open as opposed to narrow and closed because the fact that two people have different ideas of where something belongs is also very valid in discussing a plan to make sure things are categorized as you would like them. Okay? And we wanted to do it this way, since you already had goals, rather than make it wide open on initiatives, we thought it would best to have you all think about your goals and what initiatives you might want under each of those. And all, as I understand, you're all parts of other committees on the county and that sort of thing, so you might think about your committee and what kind of goals and what kind of initiatives need to take place regarding that particular committee. So, that's 40 minutes. If I can get through, we'll see. We're going to break for 20. So, in theory, we're going to be through with that by 7:00, 7:00 PM. We're going to break for 20 minutes, and you'll have an opportunity to get up and walk around and then add things on here. We're going to add, during that break time, you may have talked to some people and think, "Oh gee, I have a few other initiatives." If there's anything else, we'll add some more. We're going to go through list quickly and ask if everybody understands. So, if somebody's written something you don't understand, we're going to clarify it because the committee wants to know, really wants to understand what it is. They don't want to go in with a, "I don't know what this means." Does anybody around here know what it means? You know, so we're going to clarify. We're going to narrow this, we're going to do that with multi-voting, and I'm going to do a quick summary on what, what's there, and then we're going to finish the agenda. And we're going to have you out of here no later than 8:00, preferably earlier. Is that okay with everybody? Questions?
Yes. Parking?
Parking.
Parking lot.
Thank you very much. The parking lot is for those items that don't fall into anything. If they don't, they aren't initiatives, they're, they're something somebody feels like they want to talk about, it doesn't necessarily appropriate necessarily for this particular thing, we want to make sure that that idea is over there because every idea is valid and, and it, if you had that thought, if you have a question or have something, then we're going to park it over there.
Thank you.
Then, does that goal, do we have anything that you can suggest? Do you have one of them?
Okay, so what I suggest you do is I'm going to give you this, a piece of paper, and I'm going to ask you to write on there, justice, a goal that's, so that's a really good way, thank you for bringing that up. You say, "There needs to be a goal related to justice," and you posted on that other goals during the, during, now or during the break, and that then gives the committee an idea of thoughts on that. And if there are initiatives related to justice and you don't know where to put them, then we're going to put them under here, under other initiatives because we don't know. And you may not know where your, your initiatives belong, and that's okay. That's absolutely okay. James?
Yeah, Jan, if I could add at this point, we have a, we have a strategic planning subcommittee, which is myself, Stan, Geraldo, Patsy, and Jeff Kibler. And so, what we get done tonight, that group will take away and sort through it, filter through it, and depending on how far we've gotten, then we can come back and bring those things in a more, maybe more organized fashion at that point. And that's when we would talk about, you know, prioritization and maybe get more into, you know, what we can do versus what we can't do, and what we want to do versus, you know, more into the idea, the questions that, of choosing between ideas that may not be directly aligned. Tonight is about generating the ideas. The future meeting will be about figuring out which ones actually make it into a plan.
Any other questions or comments? So, we're going to be about roles. So, I'm the facilitator. I'm the facilitator. Jeff and Sasha are going to write the ideas, are going to record those ideas on the search charts. All three of us are neutral. We have no opinion. And we can just now that, you can put the, so, my role, but I can do that. But if I ever, so Sasha, if I get in, happens to get into content, I, I don't think I will, I don't know enough about the workings of, of this, though I've spent a lot of time on the website and learning, I have to say, I know a lot more than I did. Which is, that is of itself, since I'm a relatively educated person and should know more about what's going on. So, my role is to facilitate. This lady's role is to write things down. I'll be talking to them about what to write. So, I'm the one doing all the talking up here, and I know I'm supposed to have my mic.
Yeah, I'd asked you all to put your mics on, too. When they speak. James?
Could I get some post-it notes?
I can get post-it notes to everybody because... So, with that, we are about five minutes late. So, sorry, I should have, huh? That's not, yeah, I know, but that's, that's okay, thank you. So, we have Goal One, Goal Two, Goal Three, Goal Four. Examples of what initiatives are, are in, I didn't start to write those down, and I thought, "There's just not a point in doing that." Initiatives that you currently have are on page two and three of your strategic plan. They're not written down. Should we presume, James, that these will be considered and not need to rewrite these down?
If, I, I think it would be fine if people want to add their own clarity to any of these because I know I already started writing one down that is in there kind of, but I want to clarify it. So, consider it to be part of the, what, the content that we have, but if you don't think it captures exactly what you want to see, add your own or modify it.
Okay. So, now, remember James said to you, said, and I agree, these initiatives can be very broad, almost goal-like, and I don't want to get into definitions of what a goal and initiative is, that's just not in our best interest. But, or they can be very, very, you know, we need to upgrade the water cooler within the next two months. It's not a good water cooler. So, that's what I'm saying, it can be very small active, action items versus, "We need to build a brand-new horse kennel for all the horses in the county." So, I hope I made that sufficiently absurd. Okay. So, now, we're ready. Anybody want to start? Sam?
I'll get us started with kind of a smaller idea for Goal One. I'd like to propose that we consider having a county board day of service where we all, those of us who are able, go to the nursing home and volunteer over there. Gives us an opportunity to see the facilities that we're managing and maybe even an open up to the pub, public. You know, it could be a team-building activity, too.
Okay. County Board Day of Service. That's all. Is that okay if we just leave it at that? Okay. Next? Astrid?
I think we're all pretty much agreed that we need an adult assessment center, drop-in center, whatever people want to call it.
Adult assessment slash drop-in center. Do you have a goal that mind that might be under or other?
No, that's it. We don't have any under justice.
Number, number three?
Okay. That's all right, let's put it under.
Safe and healthy, maybe, but since, since the funding is probably available for it very quickly, I think we should have this up and running and see how much pressure it takes off the jail before we commit huge amounts of money to enlarging or expanding the jail.
Okay. So, let me see if I can understand a couple of things. An adult assessment center is what you're, you're suggesting, and, and was there another one in there about building and expanding a future of the, a jail? Is, was there another one in there or my mis...
No, we have, we talked about expanding the jail. This is supposed to keep people out of the jail, and if we had it up and running and saw how many people kept out of the jail, we'd have a better idea of how much jail we need.
Okay. Aaron?
This is maybe more a little bit towards the goal, but under Goal Two, we mentioned public facilities. Comes to my mind that another very important is the public or county transportation, the highways, county highways. So, either... So either, I don't know if that'd be part of adding it to the goal or an initiative, however you want to put it under there.
So what about the highways?
Well, if we're going to maintain high-quality public facilities and like to add to the, just continue on the goal and county highway, or county highway system.
You know, what I'd like, can you go back and add that? So let's not put it there. Deb's going to go back and, or James, can I get you just to write? I'm gonna, I'm going to give you a pen. Add to the goal two and county highway facilities. Is that, not facility...
County highway system.
And county highway system.
County highways.
Okay. So that's a suggestion. And if that's okay with everybody, we're going to kind of be as flexible as we can at this point in time to try to get as many ideas as possible when they come up. Okay? Other initiatives? Okay, you can go home. Oh, I'm sorry. Geraldo?
Perhaps review of our disaster assessment team.
Okay.
And its protocol. And perhaps even review of the format of getting, providing funding for those reliefs that I know that the government would like for us to submit paperwork as to how many dumpsters of garbage that we, you know, dumped. We can't just take the garbage to the landfill. It has to have a number, it has to have the weight and all of that. I would like to have some kind of assessment so that when something happens within the county, I could inform my constituents and come forward with that. I don't think that newer members have a grasp of disaster plans that we have in place and where do we call when something like that happens and the constituents are also doing a call in center and calling us for information.
So first I heard a review of the disaster plan for the county, and that might be under goal, safe and healthy community? Okay. And then there was another piece of that. So help me out, what was the second piece?
Funding, availability by the, in other words, when something like that drastically happens, I would imagine it would be the board chair or the county administrator that would contact for the state assistance or federal assistance.
Be pro...
Provide additional funding, provide additional support, perhaps, you know, military guards.
Okay, so, so funding for a disaster when it happens. Knowledge of the funding available for disaster when it happens, is that safe and, is that close enough?
Yes.
Or not quite?
It is. You know, we see threats all the time.
Sure, sure.
Especially with the University of Illinois and its engineering department and its, you know, small nuclear plant that they have there. If there's a leakage, you know, we want to be able to handle that. I know the university has its own protocol, but what is there in place for the county outside of the cities?
Okay. What's in place for the county? Knowledge of disaster funding and what's in place for the county? Okay? Others? Now I heard, go ahead.
Renovation of the downtown jail and transfer one to, remember they transferred the youth to the downtown jail and adult takeover, you know.
Okay. So renovation of the downtown jail. Facilities? Facilities? Okay. Or it could be under other, it's up to you, facilities? Okay, renovation of the downtown jail. Sure, we can do that. Absolutely. And then, consider the movement of youth to the downtown jail once it's renovated. Okay, and then finally, that the youth detention center becomes the adult jail. Is that correct? I'm sorry, Jonathan?
There we go. Can never tell if it's on or off. I guess goes under goal three. And I think, I think we need to have a top-to-bottom review of our policy in the Champaign County Health Department.
Top-to-bottom review of the policies in the Champaign County Health Department. Diane?
It's kind of a goal four of the initiative is that, while talking about supporting downtown roads, what we need to is not go out of our realm for new growth that we cannot continue before, you know, that I don't want something new started and then we can't continue it on. But it's kind of an initiative that we don't really get into new programs, we're not going to be able to keep them going long-term.
So, evaluate all new programs in reference to long-term viability?
Viability.
Is that, I don't know if that, I'm just using a word, you tell me if it's right or wrong.
I just don't want to see any new startup programs that we can't keep going.
There you go. New start, don't...
We try to just encourage in the long run by not giving as much emphasis to the ones that already exist and we can only...
So, no new startup programs that cannot be maintained. Much better. Much better.
Explore new sources of revenue and economic development in the county. Perhaps through incentives, perhaps to building up our infrastructure, perhaps building up our roads, drainage, so that we could allow for companies to come in and therefore supporting our economic stream.
Balanced growth.
Right.
Evaluate or explore new sources of revenue.
Alternative.
Alternative sources of revenue.
Exactly.
To assist in the balanced growth, economic growth of the county.
Yes.
Okay?
Because our revenue is not getting any larger, we need to do something to do that. Perhaps working through HUD, building new complexeses within the county, spreading those funds as well because we get tax funding for that and explore different, you know, revenues for income.
HUD.
So that we could build this jail and we could go ahead and build a drop-in center and, you know, we could go ahead and continue to facilitate and provide...
For facilities.
Maintenance to our buildings. But there's no new money coming in, so we're not going to be able to, we could dream all we want, but unless we need to get new sources of revenue coming in, nothing's going to happen unless we take it from Peter to PayPal.
So, for, basically for facilit, for maintenance and building of facilities, is that, that's the real focus of this, right? Okay? So, or so, explore alternative sources of revenue for maintenance and facilities, maintenance and building new. And it could, that surely could go under facilities also. Jonathan?
I'd like to see more, I'd like to see more intergovernmental, how should I put that, cooperation when it comes to developing undeveloped land.
Would that be under balanced growth or would that be under other?
I think it probably should be under balanced growth.
Okay. More intergovernmental cooperation regarding...
Land development and undeveloped land.
More intergovernmental cooperation in undeveloped land or under... Better. And for, more intergovernmental cooperation to support for, for the undeveloped land, for planning purposes. Jim?
Yes, here we are. Big one, the big one. I'd like to see more intergovernmental cooperation when building programs, even like the adult assessment program and the youth assessment program in the, in the community.
So more interg...
Under goal three, the healthy communities, more intergovernmental cooperation for community programming.
More intergovernmental cooperation for community programming rather than one entity taking it on themselves and not working with the others in order to make it holistic.
Yeah. I think we're doing a better job and we're getting better at it, but I think we'd like to make sure that's...
Make sure that we're continuing then. Okay? Sam?
Let's keep the more intergovernmental cooperation train rolling under goal four and find a better way to address those areas of the county that have not been annexed by a city but are near a place that's been annexed by a city, so that those, those areas continue to be kept up well and served well.
So more intergovernmental cooperation in relationship to areas that are not within a city limit but close to a city limit. I.e. Lincolnshire Fields, no. I didn't say that. Patsy?
Well, to add slightly and maybe add a word or two to what you've already written is to start thinking regionally rather than in the isolated way that we tend to think and then that would lead us to revisit the land resource management plan of the county.
Okay, two things here. And I'm going to, with your permission, I'm going to put that other. Think more regionally with, in relationship to activities and programs.
Well, I think that builds on what...
Yes, absolutely.
The four of them have, they're like, they're like the chorus over there.
(laughing).
You're singing.
Okay. And then one other, you added something at the end.
Well, that folds into the county already has what's called a land resource management plan, but that dovetails into updating.
Okay. Updating the land resource, in addition to update the land resource management plan. And that would be where? You go, oh, I can't take it. I misspelled champagne, can you believe that? So I'm sorry, I had to fix that.
That's only for driving you crazy and you're going for the drink.
No, 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 no. What the thing is, I've always said I couldn't spell. That wasn't, so, way I spell is just creative. It's creative spelling. Okay, I need to hear some other people. Gary?
Under other initiatives, I would like to develop a statement of core slash statutory mandated services.
Develop a statement of core slash statutory mandated services. Would you like that in the strategic plan? Doesn't, you don't need to answer that, I just asked that question. It's okay.
It may not have to be in, but I think it'd be good for us all to know what they are.
Okay.
The other is under, safe and healthy community. I'd like a review of the effectiveness and efficiencies of the animal control department.
Review of the effectiveness and efficiencies of the animal control department.
And the final one will come under public facilities, and this is being pressed upon me by my constituents, and that would be divestiture of the county nursing home.
So divestiture of the county nursing home. And so is that kind of like, know what the future of the county nursing home is? Or it is the, you want the initiative to be the divestiture of the county nursing home?
Let's talk about the initiative of the divestiture. It's going to be controversial, but it's something that we need to talk about.
Okay, discuss and talk about the issue of divestiture of the county nursing home. Is that what I heard you say? Okay? Talk about the, okay. If we, no, it's close to, I guess, put them back. Back wall is fine. And you guys thought you had a lot of walls in here, didn't you? James?
(inaudible). Replace the county accounting system.
And where does that go? What goal?
Money.
I am there now, but it's not that correct.
Replace the county accounting system. Basic operations, got to get it done. Maybe. You want to go ahead or you, that's fine.
I have a review and redesign the county website to be more, to be both audience-driven and using responsive design, which basically means make it mobile-friendly.
Which means what?
Mobile, mobile-friendly, that's what responsive design means.
Okay, that would be under...
Yeah, you could just write, review and redesign county website.
Review and redesign the county website.
I'll keep the details.
Okay. Patsy?
Yes, looking forward, we could turn the unused part of our county campus back into a farm and the food of which then could be used for feeding the people in the jail and the nursing home.
So, you want that under facilities? That's a different issue.
That broke the rules.
(laughing) He didn't break the rules. He said it was valid...
He was standing in the corner for five minutes.
Yeah, no, wait a minute, wait a minute.
With a dunce cap.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. He could, he, his idea could be, okay. So, let's not lose this one. Reuse the part of the county campus for sustainable...
For producing local foods.
For producing local, local food. And sustain...
And staff it with people from the jail.
Yes, and staff it with...
For what? For local, local crops. Okay. You don't want to grow palm trees?
No.
Okay.
I know.
I know.
Part of it's...
Now, I'm assuming this is all in good fun, so that's part of the have fun.
And I'll hear about this for now on.
I don't think so. Oh, come on.
So, can I hold the, hold the, to the, to the, kind of a study and plan, want to produce to the jail, I want to act on our studies.
(laughing).
The study that, take action, is one of the...
Take action regarding the county jail based on the studies we've done. All the studies, any study. Okay. How, current study, all studies. Review the studies and take action. Take action on the studies for the county jail. Astrid, is that correct? My...
Yes. The adult assessment center is a part of those studies, and I think it makes sense that that should be the first thing that we take action on from those studies.
Okay, let's see. So she's advocating a position at this point in time. So here's what we're going to call this. Consider making the adult assessment center the first action item of the county jail studies. Okay? So here, so again, her, the point is there are initiatives. So the initiative is act on the studies, one of them. There's another initiative that says make the assessment center the first initiative, the first action, action item.
From the studies.
Well, if that's going to be first, how about A1 is merit-based bail? Is that merit-based? Is that what it's called instead of?
Oh, I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
So...
If it cash bail.
Right. No?
Consider, consider merit-based bail.
Is that what it's called? Is that one?
Is that, is that right?
An alternative bail, is that okay, wait a minute? Alternative bail system. So, we don't wanna get too hung up on words. What we are more interested in is concepts. So, if the initiative doesn't come across quite like an initiative, that's okay, we're trying to get your ideas, okay? Yes?
Explore possibilities of downsizing public offices as well as government, per se. I think there's room there, maybe perhaps to consolidating some of our current offices that we have in county government. And I think we need to explore some of those possibilities as a revenue savings cost.
Explore options for consolidation of county offices as a revenue savings option.
Right.
I was gonna put it under other.
I was letting them take the lead, I just threw it out there and I don't know where it lands.
It can be other, I mean, if you don't know exact, so here's my suggestion, if you don't know exactly where it goes, let's just put it under other for safe, for the sake of getting it up on the board.
I would say Goal Number One, which is high-performing, and I think if there's a redundancy in a lot of the things that we do do, we need to trim down the fat and make it more streamlined, so that we could save a lot more funding, so that we could buy this jail.
Okay, so what I'm gonna suggest we do is, rather than write it's-
Just kidding, just kidding.
So, I'm gonna also say, I'm gonna ask Deb to write under here and say, "Consider Goal One," parentheses, "Goal One," so, rather than rewrite it. Patsy?
With Mr. Schrader's permission, I would like to add to his suggestion of reviewing the county health board ordinance, but setting up the prioritizing of reviewing our major ordinances, not just county health board, but liquor ordinance and some of those.
So, may I suggest we not add, we just add a new one, review all county ordinances, is that okay with you? Yeah, we're just gonna add it here, just review all county ordinances to Goal Three. Well, I can see that my having second pages without the goal on is not, was not the right thing to do, so, okay. Jim?
To set a high priority on studying our facilities, especially in regards to the fact that we have an ADA report that we have to do, compliance audit. We know, we know we have to study the facilities.
Review all of our facilities in, in relationship to the ADA compliance audit.
Well, they've been reviewed, all of them. We need to do some with the facilities for a long time, because we haven't been able to spend money on them since, you know, downturn in the economy. We had to do that, and then we also have to look at it for, because of the ADA, now it looks like we may have a funding crunch from the state, but the facilities still haven't really been, had anything done to them, so they're gonna have to have a high priority. We've spent some money on some of the social issues that have been brought up tonight, but we haven't really addressed some of the issues with the facilities.
Okay, so, make-
Make it a high priority.
Make facilities, revision, not revision, updating, updating facilities a high pri-
Study to understand what, where they're at, that's, we get, we need a study to understand where the facilities are at, how they, you know, what problems we have with the facilities, so that we can address them, yeah, the maintenance.
Review all facilities' current needs.
Review all facilities' current needs, thanks Deb.
Including ADA.
And-
As well as with ADA.
Could I add something to that?
Either that, or we can add a new one.
Well, I'm going, as part of facilities, we will be doing a sub-strategic plan, a lot of what Jim just mentioned will be within that, so it'll be very valuable to have that input from him on that. Thank you.
Okay, so, so that you're just, you're making, you don't really need anything written up here at this point in time. So, the facilities committee, as I understand it, is going to be really spending some time reviewing those, and would like input regarding your, your sub-plan. Complete a long-range facilities master plan. So, all of those could, I mean, so, so what's happening here is, is ideas are coming and people are thinking of different things. We're gonna go and keep adding them as different things, and what happens is, the committee's gonna come back and look at all of these and then, and decide how they're gonna put those back for you, for you all, for your consideration. Okay? Diane?
About a half a mile, out of my house, they hear me.
But anyway, yes, it was, it was. Go team.
One of the things that I'd like to see, I don't know if it's an initiative or quality of life or whatever it is, maybe a little more collaboration with other entities, and basically, other nonprofits, maybe? There's a lot of things that we do that might cross-reference into what some nonprofits do.
So, collaboration on what specifically? Everything?
Yes, but for the most part, I'm thinking about the jails and the justice and the things of those nature, but human services, maybe? I don't, I don't know how to put that.
Okay.
But collaboration with nonprofits, with what we need to get done.
Collaboration with other nonprofits for areas that the county is working, in areas that the county is working on. And probably that's not other nonprofits, but collaboration with nonprofits, which is different than collaboration with other governments. Okay, it is now seven o'clock. We, hang on, I'll get, I'll get to you. We've spent 30 minutes, rather than 40 minutes. I see more ideas. We can do one of two things. We can take more, a few more ideas now. We can take a break, and you can write some more down, and we can put them up afterwards, and you can make some comments, or we can continue. I promised you a break at seven. I'm determined that you have the opportunity to make that decision. Okay, let's take the break, and then what I also suggest you do, in addition to writing things up here, if you have ideas that you wanna put up on the initiatives, I invite you to use your post-it notes to put those up at the same time, so that, that will move that process forward. How's that? Okay. And those of you that I haven't heard from, I'd like to hear from you after the break. Okay? Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and get started, and I'm gonna say thank you to those, those who added things, but I'm gonna go ahead and read those, so that we're all clear on what they are. So, under Goal One, move commodity IT systems to the cloud to allow, to allow IT to focus on, IT staff to focus on county systems. Does everybody understand what that means? I, well, okay. And what, does anyone have any questions, so we, does any clarification?
Explain that to somebody that's tech-challenged.
Okay, explain that to somebody that's tech-challenged. Explain that to me, James.
Yeah, buy the things that we can buy as services that are not specific to our county, so that our staff, who has to work on, you know, justice system, accounting systems that the county uses, can focus on that, because we know our IT group is understaffed. So, one way to get them more time to work on our most important activities is to push some of the stuff that, the word we use these days is commodity IT out, where we can buy it in bulk.
So, I added, "Buy services when appropriate." Is that-
And I got approval from Andy before I put that up there, just so you know.
Okay. Encourage professional development opportunities for staff, if we all understand that one. Encourage a feuding proposal, I'm-
That word is silo.
Encourage the siloing of funding proposals. Is that right?
Yeah.
Does everybody understand what that means?
What's that mean?
What's that mean?
Means, basically, what Ms. Michaels just talked about, and that is a little bit more cooperation, and there is another way of doing granting, which I just learned about, called NOFA, Notice of Funds Available, and it's built on the concept of, here are the goals, you different agencies figure out how you can work together to meet those goals and put a proposal forward.
I added the word cooperation, so we're, incur-
Well, that's, I should probably add it to the right place.
Increase use of local expertise slash UIUC. You know, when I read that, I thought it said decrease use of local expertise, UIUC, and I thought, well, that's gonna be a controversial one, then I read it. Long-range plan. Then there, so here it says jail and adult assessment center need to be together.
One is in Goal Two, and one is in Goal Three. They're both part of the same study that he was talking about.
Okay. So, you're saying wherever the, wherever the goals are, they need to be together. Sam? We have energy reduction plans for both savings, conservation, for both conservation and savings. Is that develop energy reduction plans? And equitable provisions across the board for all board members.
Do you need an explanation?
Do we need an explanation? Okay.
Well, as I'm reading the various ordinances, I am finding some board members on some boards have far more perks and per diems than board members on like-kind boards, meaning as to responsibility or size of budget that they handle. A lot of it depends on when the ordinances were written, and so maybe it's time for us to look across the board and even these things out.
Does that mean you haven't been paying John Jay?
Do we wanna use the word perks? Do you wanna use the word perks?
We're gonna end up in the news gazette.
Benefits, is that okay, Patsy? I just keep thinking that's not what a government-
It's there. They're there.
I'm gonna give you another five minutes to add some more ideas, if you have any. Oh, you all have more ideas, if you have any more ideas to go on this board. Lorraine?
Yes, I'd like to see us review our MPA contract more closely, because we need to start having some kind of say-so in some of the things that go on there to nursing homes.
Okay. Review the MPA contract closely, more closely. Would that be under? And that's nursing home, so where would you put that? Cool. It does, let's go ahead and just put it in under other for purposes of discussion. Review the MPA, what was it again? Contract more closely. Do you want me to read this for you? Or you wanna read it for me, and then we'll put it up? I mean, it's your idea, it's not mine.
All right.
But it might be my idea.
I'd like to revise the county budget adoption process. One, budget of independent boards to be voted separately, and that, I don't necessarily need to name the boards. And two, require outside boards to certify that board adheres to county personnel policy at the time their budgets are submitted.
Okay, and that would be under open and transparent government?
Yeah, good enough.
I mean, I, is any, any other questions about that? Okay. Christopher, do you have any?
Sure. I was having trouble figuring out where the nursing home fell under the goals, but I guess it's under Goal Number Three, is what we're saying. So, I would add, and this is somewhat at odds with what Gary suggested earlier, but I would say we should develop a sustainable strategy for ensuring the continued availability of services provided by the Champaign County Nursing Home.
Okay. Do you have that, develop a sustainable strategy?
For ensuring continued availability of services provided by the Champaign County Nursing Home. I think that leaves room for models, other than the one that we currently have, but indicates that there are people who are getting value from those services.
Okay.
And I would say, as a second point, and this goes to sort of provision of services, which there's not really a goal for, but I would put it under Goal Number One, I guess, and that's to identify strategies and contingency plans for dealing with declining state support.
Develop strategies and contingency plans for dealing with declining state support. It's gonna be the goal for everybody, isn't it?
Can we create a strategy for maintaining administrators and staff? Like, don't let them quit. Oh.
That would be three, right?
I don't remember where Goal Three is. Save and heal, no, that's not it. Government, it's Goal One, it's Goal One. Development, a strategy for maintaining staff and administrators of Champaign, of Champaign County. For retention of, yeah. I think that's one of those side conversations that I missed, isn't it?
It's okay.
It's okay. So far, I haven't kicked you out. An anklet on da, okay, there you go, so this is, you can't leave. I'm guessing that's it, you can't leave. Others? Ones? Yes.
To have a discussion about moving this county to a home-rule county.
Discussion of moving Champaign County to be a home-rule county. That's all part of that budget.
Yeah, budget. It's Goal One.
Isn't it? Is that Goal One?
What, if we can't ask?
No.
Can't ask a question?
Jim's got one. Another rule breaking, I tell ya. He's writing emails, it's, it's no texting, it's, it's different.
He knows that it can be foiled though.
I'm just Googling how big you have to be to be a home-rule county.
I have no idea. How, how big do you have to be to be a home-rule county? You have to go to the voters. That could be controversial. Anyway. Others? Once? Twice? Okay, gone, but that doesn't mean your time has ever ended for, until this committee brings you back some things. You can always send James an email or Deb an email to, and if you don't wanna put it in email with the whole board, because that violates whole bunches of home, whole bunches of things. Yes.
And I'm sorry, I realize I need to make a correction to my statement up there. What I said was continued availability of services, not necessarily delivery by the county.
You, that's what you said and it was my fault. Thank you. So continue to send in ideas and things. So what we're gonna do now is, I have some time built in to do clarification, but I, I'm gonna make an assumption and you're gonna tell me I'm right or wrong, that for the most part, we, after we went through the ones that were written up here on Post-it notes, we pretty much discussed at the time, so you have an idea of what each of those meant, mean. Is that true or do you want me to go through one by one by one for clarification? Everybody okay with that? In normal circumstances, that's how I would handle this, but I think we did try to. So what I'm gonna do is count the numbers and we're gonna do what we call multi-voting. And the multi-voting is each of you are gonna be given, I'm gonna use a, a way of doing this is called N over three. So if there's, I think there's about thirty-five to forty ideas up here, and I'll count them again, thirty-five to forty, and I'm gonna divide that by three. So if there's thirty, I'm gonna give each of you ten dots. I'm gonna ask you to at least use one dot on each goal. So, so choose at least one of your priorities from each goal. So that's, so if you got ten, you have five of them have to be a spread across all, the whole gamut. The other five, if you wanna, if you have, everything is in goal one that you like, then you can put all five of them on goal one. You cannot put two dots on the same thing. Lots of rules here, okay? Rules. You're gonna get probably about twelve of these. I want each of you to put a priority on something from each goal. That would be one of the four and the other. So each of you should have a priority in one of the five areas of the, of the county's responsibility. Then I want you to use the others how you would like them, except that you cannot block vote for the county jail, or you can't block, you can't put all your rest of yours on the county jail, or you can't put them all on IT. So if James really wants everything to be IT, he could have used seven of his twelve votes on IT. Well, he can't. He has, can he use one of them on IT, but he can't use seven of them? Does that make any sense? I'm picking on him because I know him. Okay, so how many do we have? Did you count them, Deb, by any chance?
So we have one, so these are two, is that correct? Okay, so, I'm gonna put a dot here and a dot here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Did you count those? I counted, I counted the other bits up here too.
You counted these already?
Yes, we have to subtract, I have thirty-four, so we're counting the, just subtract. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So ten dots.
I had twelve, and so-
So total forty-two.
So divided by three is?
Ten.
How?
Ten.
Well, they probably need a few more, twelve. Twelve of them.
So I am gonna give you twelve. Yeah. So, let me tell you- Each of them, two strips of dot. I think there's six on each strip. Three, six, nine, twelve, so, yeah.
Okay, so, what was I gonna say? Put the dots beside, beside or around here. Again, let me remind you that just because something does or does not have a dot on it, doesn't mean that the committee will not look at it. This is just an exercise to get a kind of beginning sense of what you all are thinking. Okay? I just don't want people thinking that something's gonna get lost totally at this point in the process.
They are, yeah.
Often when you have a couple that are same, the same thing, the, the voting, the multi-voting gets split between those two and so then they don't come out on top, which is why you never eliminate anything. Often we would also maybe combine things, that takes a lot longer than what we might have. Everybody agreeing on how to combine something is a little more of a, a longer-term process to, to deal with that, so I'm, I'm, gotta keep talking here or I'm gonna be in trouble. So your top multi-voted thing is the long-range facilities plan. So that's, that's the, the one that people really think that needs to be done in general as, as a group here, you think that really needs to be done. So almost all of you think, think that. Then, then we go to the nines. Replace the county accounting system. Top to bottom review of the counties in the Champaign County Health Department. Develop a statement of mandated, well, that's seven. Review the MPA contract more closely. Develop statement of, then we go six, seven, and eight. Statement of core mandated services. More intergovernmental cooperation in, for program planning. And we saw a lot of intergovernmental cooperation on a lot of things, you know, so in some ways that whole concept permeated some things and maybe didn't come out as strong. Develop a sustainable strategy for ensuring continuing availability of services for the Champaign County Nursing Home. Review all facilities' current needs as well, for the current needs as well as to look at the ADA. That was the whole concept that we need to be sure we really know where the facilities are and what, what needs to be done and we've kind of forgotten about some of the maintenance that needs to happen and now with state funding, we're gonna have some pro, might have some problems too, but the facility's still needed to be taken care of. Develop strategies for declining state support. It's not, really not a very surprising one that's high on your radar at this point in time. And we did the county planning system and IT, look at the whole concept of IT and buy services where we can and let our staff do the services that are very specific for the county. So that's where we are. I think the, the more interesting one is, kind of an interesting aside, is the, the goal here on three, none, none of the top issues in the multi-voting area, none of them, this one, these didn't come to the top up to the six, seven, or eights in terms of voting. I'm, I know, none of that means that it's not important, it just means in this instance, and it could mean a, and now I'm gonna get into it could mean for the committee to take a look at that goal and see how that relates to the other goals and perhaps there's a way of breaking it apart or doing something. That's what it could mean. I think there was only one thing, and I don't even know where it is, that didn't get any votes. That's pretty amazing, too. So, you know, usually in these kind of multi-voting arenas, we see several things that don't get any votes. And so what it shows me is that you're really a balanced group, that you all have a lot of issues and you have a lot of opportunities to work together because there's so many different things that this county needs to do. Deb, do you have any, any kind of thoughts on this at this point? James?
Yeah, I just wanna thank everyone for being here and being engaged in this process. I'm, I'm gonna reach out to the folks who aren't here tonight and see if I can sit down with them, maybe one-to-one or in small groups, to see if I can get some, some ideas out of them. But this is the, the kind of, this is what I was hoping for, for the, the committee, the subcommittee to take and move forward and, and bring something back for the whole of us to, to look at and then really maybe get into some prioritization.
If I could just get a consensus on when people voted for a master plan for all of the county facilities, did they include then the issue of the nursing home and the jail or did they look at that as a separate thing? Just nod your head so we have some idea.
I looked at them as all.
All together. Okay, great, thanks.
Here is all.
Well, I hope that this has been, in a normal circumstances, the other thing I would do is, how did you feel this process went? Is this, did this work for you? Was there things you might have changed or even better if? More people have been here, we always do that. More food. No, the food was great, thank you. So it was my pleasure to meet all of you tonight and to get to know a little bit more about the county I live in and have a great deal of respect for all of you who are giving your time and energy for the county. You have a huge task on your hands and a lot of priorities and you have to be really multi-talented to do this. So thank you as a, as a citizen and a resident of this county, I appreciate it. And thanks for inviting me.
Thank you, Jan.